Good evening. My name is Kevin Weinfeld. I'm chairman of the Foxborough Planning Board. I'm calling this public meeting to order at 7:00 PM. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually via Zoom. Public comments this evening will be accepted during certain portions of the meeting. To offer comments via Zoom, you'll be asked to use the button in Zoom labeled Raise Hand. This will alert us that you wish to speak and will bring you into the meeting one at a time. If you're planning to speak tonight, you may want to take a moment to find the Zoom button. Make sure you're in a quiet space and having a working microphone. Also, please be sure your Zoom window includes your name. If you're participating by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you're not speaking tonight, we recommend you not use Zoom, but rather watch on Foxborough Cable Access via Cable TV, their YouTube channel, or Facebook Live. In the event of any technical difficulties, all matters on the agenda that have not been heard will be automatically continued to the planning board's next meeting on January 28th, 2021. All votes will be taken by roll call. At this time, I would ask the planning board members to introduce themselves. I'm Kevin Weinfeld.
Ron Bressi.
Tracy Vasili.
John Rhodes.
Well, do we know if Jeff will be in this evening or not?
Showing them.
Can you hear me, Kevin?
There you go.
I can hear you.
But you can't see me.
Jeff's having a little trouble getting his camera on. Let's see.
That's okay. I mean, as long as I just wasn't sure if he was attending or not. So, and John Rhodes is the associate member and tonight Gary Whitehouse is absent. He's out of town. So we do have, we do have a full board based on the fact that John is here to act as the associate when appropriate. So that being said, first item of business is the planner's report.
Okay. So I sent this out earlier, but I'll go over everybody's information. First up is the Lakeview Pavilion. They, the Lakeview Pavilion has been out of commission for, since COVID began. They've had no large weddings. They might have had one or two small, but fewer than I think 10 people, if that. We were asked out there last week and Barry Ringland, where rebuilding commissioner and I went out and visited, and they are seeking permission under the governor's emergency order to be allowed to put up two tents. One will be adjacent to their large ballroom. Sort of when you look at the building, at the front of the building, you could see it on this little picture here. Number one is when you're looking at the building to the right, they have a patio there that they've built. And then number two is a paved deck area that overlooks the lake and a much smaller, and it will have a smaller tent. The building commissioner felt that it could be permitted under the order, but we did want to make sure the planning board was aware of it. You know, we do want to ensure that this business can survive as we've assisted with many restaurants. This would be a way to allow them to plan their springtime. Obviously, everything will be done in accordance with the current rules in place at the time for, you know, COVID safety. They'll have to work with the Board of Health, the Fire Department, and the Building Department, inspections Department to ensure public safety. So I just wanted to let you all know that this is something, you know, they are in competition with other venues, other states, you know, a lot of, they lost a lot of business to Rhode Island last year and, you know, other venues and other towns. Unfortunately, there's different enforcement levels in different communities and they have to compete with. But they allow us to do it in this town. So they've actually had, they do need to keep their business afloat through this next season. Otherwise, they risk two full wedding seasons without any business. So I didn't know if the board had any thoughts or concerns for me to pass on, or if you just, I just wanted to make sure you all knew about that.
I would just make a, make a comment page. When you look at the aerial photo, that's part of your planner's report. Both the sites that they proposed for tents are pushed towards the rear of the property and towards where it's surrounded by woods. So they gave it, they gave it some thought and the larger tent site faces off to a greater wooded area than the smaller tent site.
That is true. That is true. And we do know that there have been concerns. Even though it is to the rear, there are, you know, with the lake there, sometimes there have been concerns from nearby neighbors. And the, the owners there are very aware of that. They're very sensitive to it, right down to placement of, you know, of a DJ and whatnot. They're, they're very sensitive to that. On the other hand, it is permitted, I believe it's been there since 1906. So you know, it's that balancing act. But I, they were very cognizant of being sensitive to their neighbors. Okay. So moving on, budget, the budget process is beginning. It's always a fun time. So Kevin and I will be meeting tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM with a small group of AdCom members to start discussing our budget. Just a clarification, when we talk about budget, we really only talk about the expense section. We, we, as in we staff, don't have anything to do with salaries. That's all contractual and handled at the finance and administration level. But we deal solely with the expenses and we have submitted a level fund budget for this year, as we have for pretty much every year we've been, I've been here. Thirdly, this is kind of an exciting thing. We're continuing to pursue the rail trail feasibility study. I think I've mentioned this in our past meeting, but we do have the opportunity to apply for a funding for a February 1st deadline. And we have been progressing with this on our EDC subcommittee and really starting to vet it out. And we do think as of this point, we might be able to get an application in. We do need to get somewhat more sign off from the Mast DOT, but we've been coordinating with them to get them to sign off on this type of use alongside their rail line. So, and one question I had is since this is a consistent, you know, a rail trail is consistent with the goals and the objectives of the master plan. I didn't know if perhaps the planning board would be willing to have me write a letter of support just to support the concept of feasibility study. What that means is we'd take a look at this first phase of it. It wouldn't be committing anything. It would, it might learn that we can't do a rail trail unfortunately there, but what it does is study the pros and the cons. So we, I'd love to get some planning board support to throw at that. Sometimes we find grant applications are more competitive, the more local support they have. So I thought of that at the last minute. If you guys would be willing to have me write up a quick letter of support indicating it's consistent with the master plan, I think that would go a long way.
I would certainly be in favor of that. I don't know how the other members feel.
I agree.
You'll find one of the two.
Great.
I think, I think it'd be appropriate. Should, should we take a, at some point in time, Paige, should we take a vote to give it a little bit more credence saying that we've reviewed the letter and we approve? Or is the fact that you're just writing it enough with that?
I think a quick note is fine. I mean, maybe I'll have Kevin come in and sign it. But this is just really some fluff to add to the, the grant application. So it doesn't, we don't need to put in too much time or energy on it. It's really more just showing that there's some support.
It's early on, so we don't need to get detailed.
Exactly. We're not committing to any financing or anything like that at this point. But we think it's an exciting project and I'm really happy that it looks like it's getting some quote unquote legs, pun intended. The beloved housing production plan. Um, so we received 18 comment letters and two letters to the editor. It's clear that there's a lot more, not a lot more, there's more work to be done and more conversation to be had. At our next, our last Housing Coalition meeting, we discussed doing some cable shows to provide information on some questions asked. There were a lot of questions asked around water. So we thought we'd, you know, bring Chris Gallagher in and talk about the plan as it relates to water. Same with schools, that type of thing to really, you know, we want this plan to be a community supported plan. We want it to be a real plan. So in order to get approval, we know we have to do some more digging and consensus building. So that's our next phase. So we'll be working on that over the coming months. So stay tuned. And then lastly, I have an update on the fire station. As you know, that project, the appeal on that project was settled. And so we're working towards an April closing on that. We anticipate that construction would begin in April and continue for about 12 months, maybe a little bit less, but about 12 months. And then Shovel Town Brewery is still interested in the space. And then the four apartments above would be ready in about spring of 20, where are we, 2022, with the remaining apartments back where the funeral home site is to be about six months later. So that's an exciting thing. So we're looking at, you know, 2022, another year.
Paige?
Yes.
How quickly are they going to tear down the old funeral home in the White House? That's basically, I believe condemned just because both of them are kind of liabilities.
Right away. That's the first order of business. And in fact, we're working on that right now. You wouldn't believe how complicated it is to tear down a building because it turns out like, for example, we're doing shut offs for utilities right now. And we learned that one of the utilities is still in the Keating's name. So we have to go through the rigmarole of proving that the town has the right to order a shut off. So we're doing all that in preparation. So that's the first thing, the demolition of the funeral home and the old housing authority property will be right away.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then that's sort of related to what I've been working on as well, is getting that land swap between 15 to 17 market for 17th to Centennial. Since the Market Street property is housing, housing authority, which is in effect state, we have to deal with them. It's not as hard for us to swap. It's more they want to make sure they have clear title on 17th Centennial. They want to make sure they're not inheriting, inheriting any contamination issues. So we're doing a little bit of research and to make sure that they'll be willing to take that, but that's all well underway. I'm going to the selectmen Tuesday night to get permission to do the 21E work on 17th Centennial, which we think will be fine. It's just we have to prove it. It's a standard real estate provision. So that's my update. And as I made, one last thing is I don't know who saw, who didn't, but this afternoon, the Board of Selectmen sent out a notice or the town management sent out a notice that all meetings will be held on Zoom from this point forward until COVID is better under control. So we are the first one doing that. And the plant, Board of Selectmen and School Committee apparently will be following suit. We'll be all adjusting to this new way for a little bit until we can get out of this red zone slash higher percentages for right now.
And is that rainbow thing similar to Zoom?
Similar.
Okay. Not the same.
Well, Zoom has really mastered it. So, you know, I've tried a few others and I think whether it's a level of comfort or what, you know, Zoom is the comfortable one. Rainbow works fine. It's just a little, you know, a little different and not quite as intuitive, but yeah, we'll try it tomorrow.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Um, there were some minutes from December that, well, I have one last question. Were there any, anything under active subdivisions that we need to deal with other than the, other than the firehouse thing?
Um, Gabby, do we have any active subdivisions?
You're on mute, Gabby.
Sorry. We do have active subdivisions. We just don't have a report.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the one thing is the work on Fairway Lane has started. So we've gotten a couple of phone calls from the neighbors asking, you know, what's going on. So, but Norm was there today, you know, Paige called Norm and he was there today inspecting and he's okay with it.
All right. Thank you. And then under action items, there were some minutes for December the 10th that were submitted. Was there any comments or problems or anything like that?
A couple of corrections, if I may.
Please.
Under the public hearing on Maple Place, the names of both Brad Camille and the applicant are both misspelled. And the correct spellings can come off of the submitted plan, the formal plan.
I had fixed Mr. Iliensky's name later in the minute, so I just have to go back and fix that one.
Okay. And also his representative Brad Camille as well, not McNeil.
Oh, all right. Is that it, Jeff?
That's all I had.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from December 10th as amended.
For a second. All those, we have to do a roll call vote. So just state your name and.
Tracy Vasili, yes.
Ron Bressi, yes.
John Rhodes, yes.
Jeff Peterson, yes.
Very good. Seven, so, so next order of business at 7:15 is continued public hearing for a special permit onsite ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation at nine Maple Place from Isaacson Solar.
Yep. And I just want to confirm, Kevin, that I did Mullins in and watched the video.
Thank you very much.
And I have also done the same.
Thank you, John.
So that will activate John Rhodes as the alternate member, the associate member to, to be active on the special permit application.
So, um, is there any applicant that's on the Zoom meeting that's going to be representing this to us? Or are we just having a conversation amongst ourselves? Do we know?
Yeah. Mr. Corey is here representing the applicant, I believe.
That's right.
We might have Brad Camille on here as well. I saw him earlier.
Yeah, I'm here as well.
Okay. So is that, is that all we have for this, for the applicant here? Oh.
No, Mr. Iliensky is here, I believe.
He is.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have the, we have the property owner, his attorney and the solar company. And then I see Sheila Alexander has raised her hand. So she is in a butter. Is that correct, Gabby? Do we think in a butter still? Um, when, when we get to that point, Ms. Alexander, we will go ahead and have public comment. But for right now, we're gonna, Kevin will be talking to the applicant.
So Mr. Corey or, or the engineer from the solar company, whoever would like to start. I'd be happy to entertain anything further that you'd like to bring forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Mike Corey from Madoff and Corey in Foxborough. And I'm representing the owner, Mr. Iliensky, as well as the solar contractor, Isaacson Solar. And again, I wasn't at the last hearing, so I would like to take just a moment to, to review what, what is, what's before you. Mr. Iliensky is the owner of nine Maple Place. It's a lot of land that's about 0.7 acres, twice the size at least of a lot of his neighbors. He is a Cambridge cop and he, he and his wife have had one child through a number of procedures. They're hoping to have another, but it's very expensive. And this one solar panel that he'd like to put in the, adjacent to the road would in the end generate about $90,000 in energy savings and potential sellback from heating, electricity and other elements. The, the solar panel would range from two to 12 feet. The, the front of it, and I have, I have a rendering that I could share the screen if I'm allowed to. Sure. I'd like you to be able to see it because I, you know, my, my descriptive skills aren't what they used to be. I have something that says hostess disabled participant screen sharing. I don't know if I can do it.
We just made an adjustment. You should be able to do it now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So I am, I've put up on my screen, I'm hoping you can see it, a depiction of the panel. It runs from two feet at its base at an angle to 12 feet. And, you know, when, when you first hear about this, I in fact thought it, you might think it's a cell tower or something. It actually isn't. And the way the, the cover that the property owner would like to put around it would make it, you know, as attractive as, as anything, you know, not the same as a shed, but very similar in, in a view. What he's proposed to do is to plant at the, at the front part, roses and other flowering plants. As the, as the panel rises and the panel's made of glass and some black aluminum. It's not ugly gray metal or anything. As it rises, he would have shrubbery and then arborvitae at the, at the, at the top. And the top portion would face his home. The, the lower part with the flowers would be facing the street. The, then there would be trellises on either side, which is what face, what his neighbors face along with shrubbery, as you can see. I can, I have one other picture I can share. If you'd like, hold on. I had, I had the photo up, but I'm not sure how to, how to share it. It's a, it's a front depiction. And I can submit it to the, to the board once I figure it out, perhaps after this, after this meeting. We would submit that this is actually a very attractive, you know, unusual, but it's attractive structure. It's certainly no higher than his garage. And the neighbors, to the extent the neighbors can see, I think he's proposed decoration, cover and screening that's appealing. As you can see, we are on the other side of the, the rendering, there's a home with a six foot high vinyl or wood fence that would block the view of this structure entirely. If you're on the second floor, yeah, you could probably see it. But if you did, if you were, then it would be, it would be, you know, not, not an unappealing, not an ugly structure in any reasonable standpoint. Now, we got here by virtue of the fact that the owner and Isaacson Solar applied for and obtained a building permit and an electrical permit. And in reliance on that, they, they undertook about $12,000 to date in construction costs of a total in, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 38,000, the total cost. And the town, as is it right, realized it made a mistake and issued a stop work order. It's perfectly valid. A town has to enforce its own ordinance. But we're submitting that the structure itself is, is not intrusive or, or ugly. In fact, it's, it's, we acknowledge unusual, but attractive, especially the way that the owners proposed to provide cover. And if, if this, I think, you know, while the, while the process by which the building permit position is wrong, I don't think there's anything per se illegal or prohibited about it. If the board were to deny this entirely, he'd be, would be out the 12,000 in expenses. And then there's another, possibly 2,500 in demolition and, and removal costs. And we're proposing that the, the layout of this structure, and we can submit, you know, a formal, you know, design plan for the board to consider is perfectly reasonable. It would accomplish what Mr. Iliensky needs and would protect his, the valid interests of his, of his neighbors in, you know, not being forced to view something unattractive. And again, his lot is twice the size of any others. So it's not as if this would dominate the landscape on his property. We'd be, we'd be open to hearing what the board and the abutters have to say. But would really like, you know, this was, it was, you know, an error that resulted in the construction starting and Mr. Iliensky having laid out this money. And we'd like to keep this to the extent we can in place and taking into account the town's and the abutters' interests and, and preferences.
Anything else from any other members of your team, Mr. Corey from, you know, Mr. Iliensky or, or his, his representative from Isaacson?
Brad, did I miss anything or did I leave anything out?
No, I think, I think you did a good job about laying, you know, our plan and, and, you know, how Mr. Iliensky wants to make this as visually appealing as possible in the neighborhood to not detract from anyone's property value while also maintaining the ability to produce 90,000 plus dollars worth of energy production so that he can, you know, get ahead in life and, and continue to grow his young family.
So when you, so Brad, when you say that the $90,000 number that both you and Mr. Corey referred to, is that over the lifetime of the, of the panel's use or is that an annual thing? What, how does that relate?
Yeah. So that's, that's over roughly 20 years of energy production that it's guaranteed to produce. And that's assuming a 4% annual increase of electricity costs. So it's a, it's a very conservative estimate based on the production that this system is, is expected to, to produce would result in a minimum of $90,000 in savings for the, for the customer.
Mr. Bressi, you want to speak?
Brad, is that 90,000 a net number or is that a gross number? Because we haven't heard what the upfront costs are putting this, you know, project in.
Yeah, that's the, that's the estimated production value of the energy. That speaks nothing to the actual cost of the project.
So what would the cost be? Just so we, out of curiosity, what would the net end up at?
Yeah. The net cost after all of the, the client's incentives that he's going to get from the state and the federal government, the net cost is somewhere around 20 to 25,000.
Okay. That, and Brad, that's after a federal tax credit?
That's after a federal tax credit and state tax credit and some other incentives that are available through the Massachusetts Smart Program.
Okay.
I, go right ahead.
I like what you showed as far as the landscaping and screening on the side view of, you know, the panels. But my biggest concern as far as visual would be the south facing of the panel, which is going to be just the sheer face of the panel, which is going to be extremely visible going up the street. And there's one abutter in particular that is staring right at this house. And I think that needs to be addressed.
Of course. I can share my screen if you'd like. I can show that south facing view in addition to kind of an overhead shot that I think shows that neighbor in, in his view shed, if you will.
Can I just, Kevin, do you mind?
No, please go ahead.
I appreciate like the aesthetics and everything that's trying to be done. And I appreciate the story that the attorney has shared with us. But, and my heart, the heart in me, I do have a heart. I feel very badly for this family and the situation that they're in. But as a planning board, you know, when we consider special permits, we have to take into consideration very specific things in that, in that process. So it's, you know, the community needs served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, which obviously isn't an issue here. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, neighborhood character and social structures, impact on the national, natural environment, excuse me, and potential economic and fiscal impact to the town, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. So while I appreciate it's, you know, there's stuff being put up around it to look at. And, and, you know, we want to do whatever we can to help this homeowner. You know, putting all of that subjectivity aside, if I look at these six things, I personally cannot reconcile voting in favor of a special permit here because it just. Voting in favor of of a special permit here because it just does not. It doesn't meet any of these, it doesn't meet any community needs, traffic flow is irrelevant. Adequacy of utilities and other public services irrelevant, neighborhood character and social structures, I think that's a big issue. Impact on the natural environment and then potentially economic and fiscal impact to the town, there's none there. So, you know, as I look at that, us saying yes would be going against those six things that we should be considering. And if we did that, which we really can't do as a board. We're we're, you know, as much as I want to help one homeowner. There's also how many other homeowners on that street that have been very vocal. In i- in their desire to not have such a structure where it's placed and I personally visited the structure three times. Had the chance to talk to some of the neighbors and I've got it, you know, I've got to say that I I agree with them.
This is silly, if I could um just speak briefly, the um. The most of the criteria are not impact um positively or negatively. Uh by this issue, um the key one is the impact on the neighborhood. And I'm submitting, maybe you disagree, but I'm submitting that this is, while it's a different structure. With the uh plantings, um the shrubbery and the uh trellises. It's not unattractive, it's certainly no more. Ugly than a shed.
I would respectfully disagree. Have you gone out and seen this personally?
I have, I have, yeah, um I haven't seen it with the rendering um that shows the cover, but I think if you. Consider it with the um with the cover, the uh screening and the uh trellises. I think it's actually um appealing, different, unusual, um and it's going to be. Over the next ten years, it's going to be the standard, this this um. Solar energy is going to become more and more critical and this is not an unappealing structure.
I am opposed, I'm not opposed to solar energy, I'm totally. But it's where this has been placed, the neighborhood that it's in. And you pointed out the neighborhood character and social structures really being the only criteria. It's also what community needs are served by the proposal. It's not, it's one family's needs and I don't want to dismiss that one family because they're resident in this town, they're just as important as everybody else. But it when we're you're balancing the needs of one family versus a town, a neighborhood, neighbors. You you know, you. Very hard to. To do what's best for one if it's not, you know, if there's so many other people on this, the other part of it's not best for.
I guess I'm saying the same thing, um I'm just saying it in a different way, um the um the interests. Of the neighbors aren't being served by it, but they aren't being harmed. Um and what I'm arguing is the criteria where it, what is the. Uh what is the impact on the neighborhood and I'm saying it's minimal, it's different. Uh but it's not unattractive and I I think it's really just uh kind of the 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 distinction is. Very subjective and in the eye of the beholder, but also on top of that. Um if the town were to deny this and and I'm not saying that they didn't validly issue a stop work order, they did. I can't, I can't argue that they didn't, they have, they have that right, but from an equitable standpoint. The owner incurred substantial costs uh in good faith based on a a building permit that he had. And there, you know, to deny it in total and say, get it out of there. Um is really harsh. We just finished, when we can do something else in terms of screening. And what, you know, this is this this some rendering that we presented is a proposal, if you'd like something more. Certainly, but um we're we're open to that, um oh Brad, is that the uh?
If I can just provide some clarification around that, you know, what happened, building department and what they issued or didn't issue stop orders. You know, permits, that is not up for debate or discussion this evening. We have been instructed to, you know, basically treat this as though no construction has started. You all have come to us to say we want a special permit for this. So, well, the human being in me feels very badly. The task that we have as planning board members is to is to render a decision on this. Based on if it came to us right from the get go.
Understood, but but I'm asking that um in deciding. Whether whether to approve it or not, you can't deny that it's already. Been half built and it it's, it would just really be devastating to this family. To have to incur, not only incur the twelve thousand already that they've spent, but also the. Uh demolition and removal costs. Um when there is, in in my view, in my, I'm positing to this board. That there is, there there is a way to make this um a reasonably appealing visual. As you can see in the in the depict, in the in the rendering and if the board, I'm asking if the board. Um doesn't like this, if there's something more that they could ask for, rather than saying, forget it because. You can, you can, in the abstract. Forget about the reality of it, but it is, there is a reality that. This man spent twelve thousand dollars of his money in good faith and and in fair reliance. On a building permit um that is, you know, to pull it now just adds, it's devastating, devastating.
Well, Mr. Corey, just just since you didn't attend the last meeting, I think you should just be made aware of a couple of things. Part of the question, part of the discussion we had the last time was about. Could it be relocated, could it be located somewhere else? So uh you know, Brad's Brad's point of view was it could, but it would not generate as much power. As it could be in this specific location. Some of the other things that were 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 relative, so uh you you know, I agree with what Ron said earlier. Maybe this is doing a little bit to take the curse off it from the people directly across the street. But in terms of that one neighbor directly to the south, as lovely as this may look to you. Um uh uh you know, they, he may, he he may and probably does not agree, he may. He may be in the background somewhere waiting to speak, I don't know, but you know, and and this is not about. Uh Mr. Liensky or Brad or the or the building department, it's really about, you know. Based on the happenstance of the way things happen. You know, the town council told us, we need to look at this as if it was. A fresh thing, you know, it's 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 tablerraza, would we approve it if it was placed here today, just just the way it's depicted? And I think Tracy uh is giving you her point of view about what what she sees and what she thinks. And honestly, I'm looking at this depiction and it is very nice. But I don't think it shows anything really to scale because I've seen this, when I first drove by. I drove down Maple Avenue and I could see the superstructure without the panels on it through the buildings from the other street. And when I drove up to it and parked near it. You know, it's it's i- i- it's, it it feels in in real life considerably bigger than that. So I understand why the neighbor to, especially the neighbor to the south um feels like. He is the most aggrieved or the most affected. By the by the current, by the by the depicted s- structure. And I think that, you know, uh not through, not through anyone's fault, I mean, you know, uh. Uh Mr. Liensky did have a conversation with him. Prior to bringing in the final, you know, uh getting the final approvals. And said he was going to, at least this is the way I interpreted what he said last week, two weeks ago, was that. He said that he wanted to put a, he wanted to put a solar system at his home. I don't know e- either, either the neighbor. Didn't hear it correctly or it wasn't, it wasn't clear that it was going to be a ground array. So he presumed in his testimony that it would be on the roof somewhere, which, you know, in many cases. It might have been, it wasn't, it wasn't specific in this case and he probably wouldn't have cared much about that. But he feels like this is physically very close, you can't see the uh the garage there or shed, whatever you want to call it. That's right next door, but he's right beyond that and uh. Uh uh and the neighbors across the street also felt that they were being affected. I, you know, I I think clearly you're you're making an attempt here with the arbivites and the flower plantings. But I'm not sure that they're gonna uh diminish the impact to the degree that you believe they would. I I think we, you know, i- if if this had been presented to us. From the very beginning, I'm sure we would have had some conversation. Similar to what we had, you know, at the initial, at the initial year we had the other day, the initial uh uh yeah, hearing the other day, which was. You know, well, where else can we put it? Before you cut that tree down and place it right there, where else can you put it on the property? As as you mentioned yourself, his property is considerably larger than any of his neighbor's property, there's a more area there. You know, Brad, uh you know, in in representing his client last week, did let us know or a few weeks ago, whatever it was, that. He would not probably, not not more than probably, he would not be able to get the type of. Correct me if I'm wrong, for the solar gain or whatever you call that, the amount of energy produced if he relocated, you know. Um the 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 solar array to somewhere else on the property and that's part of the issue.
That's correct.
Um so I'm not, I'm not ready to give you my point of view yet, but I just want you to hear more of this. So that you understand a little bit further about where the board may be coming from this evening.
Understood, understood, um and what we're, what we've presented here isn't the um, you know, our last and final proposal, if there's something short. Of, you know, remove it from this location, we'd be more than happy to hear it from the board or from the butters.
Uh can I ask a question there, Kevin?
Who who's speaking?
It's Jeff.
Oh yeah, please.
Yep, just a question uh relative to that last statement. And that would be uh if that's not necessarily your final proposal. Uh would the applicant uh be open? Either to some sort of, if not outright relocation, perhaps repositioning. Something short of that, or perhaps. If you were talking about some loss of gain, in your words, Kevin, if we talked about. Uh moving it like we did in the last uh or the first part of the hearing. We had spoken about the backyard specifically and that's when uh Brad had talked about nah, well, the reason we didn't do that is because. You know, it would not have been as advantageous in this location. Uh or would we be open to possibly a scaling back in, you know, in the more advantageous position? I'm just putting those out there as possible uh considerations.
Thank you, thank you.
Kevin, could I chime in?
Is that John?
Yes, yeah, I Jeff has brought up some good points that you can't always. And I've been involved in in civil engineering site plans for a number of years, I'm now retired. But sometimes you can't always get exactly what you want in your site. And life itself is not just a civil engineering drive, but life itself is full of compromises. But it and just to go back to the six criteria. The the real criteria that gives me heartburn is criteria number four, the neighborhood character and social structures. All the others are either neutral or are not really applicable to a project of this. So, if you, if you looked at and you took your plan. And you drew in some radiuses and distances from various structures and their primary point of view. And came up with the best location on the site. Isn't that, isn't that, and this might be the engineer in me, isn't that what you go forward with for. Quote, political purposes versus the actual engineering and then is that feasible to build? I mean, that and and I think. And 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 I I think Brad, what you probably did is you did your job the best you could, this is where I'm gonna get my maximum orientation. Over the array of the fall, the summer and the spring, uh less objects in the way. And it may not be the most feasible compromise because you have neighbors and you have a planning board you gotta work with too. In in allowing the terms that Jeff has has laid out, I think, I think Jeff has a good point. Because the only, the only criteria that we need to measure by that gives me heartburn is. Neighborhood character and social structures and actually. I could say under number five that there's probably a minimal positive because you're producing electricity without creating pollution. So, you know, that's, that's my perspective. I will also say that I am an archconservationist also, so. I'd love to have one of these in my house, but I have a forty thousand square foot lot, so I could do, in excess of forty, so I could do it. The billing permit. Some sensitivity to my neighbors, but anyway, but my my thought is that Jeff has brought up a good idea and I know. When there's a plan to do a project and we sit and we're not actively pursuing it, that's uncomfortable, but. Maybe it gets you to a point where all parties can agree. I rest my case.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add at the moment?
Yeah, if I if I may, Brad, to me, Isaacson Solar. Just going to uh share my screen here and just kind of. I don't know if this came up um while the gentleman uh John uh was speaking here. This is a is a software, design software that we use when we're citing our systems. Um this is all based on uh data, uh LiDAR data that shows you the height of trees and structures around and whatnot. Uh so just to show you that this is, this is very accurate, uh these green lollipops that you see here are um. Uh represent representing the 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 trees that are there, um if I can go to the. The entire property, although it's larger than any other R fifteen zone in the neighborhood. It really is shaded out entirely from this grove of trees. Um and so if I were to, or if Isaacson were to, um you know, rip this out of the ground, relocate it to the rear of the property. Or even closer to the home, um you're basically looking at lawn decorations, uh you know, you you can't put. Solar panels in the shade, they're not going to produce any power. Um you know, we did a whole site analysis and uh the most reasonable spot to to do. I was actually putting it on that south south side of this property um and removing the uh that one tree, uh that was.
Hey Brad, it's trying to be the silly, is there a way to slide this map? Down so that we can see the neighbor's house better? That if you're facing the solar array. Can can I see it downward?
Satellite view?
Okay.
Um I believe the neighbor who has the largest.
Concern is right there, correct?
Yeah, exactly, is is right here.
And where's the array right now?
So if you go to a street view here, scroll down.
Technical here, I like it.
The array is.
Okay, I'm not very technical, I'm old.
The gentleman's house, I believe, is right here, there's a natural fence um that Mike referred to in his opening statement. Um there as well as the vinyl um on the other side here, so this is kind of where the array is located. Um there's a vinyl fence, natural fence here, some some plantings and whatnot as well. And then Al is obviously willing to add some gardening and some landscaping to uh to to dress it up a bit.
And that big tree is the one that's gone, right?
Yeah, I hate to take trees down, um obviously, I'm a environmentalist at heart being in solar, but sometimes inevitable. Um we were operating under the uh assumption that this was fully approved. Um I will say, you know, when you do look at the site right now, i- it's jarring, there's no way about it, there's no other way to kind of describe. This skeletal structure that's there, um but if if we're gonna almost pretend that this isn't there. I would ask everybody to reserve their initial gut reaction to how this looks right now and to judge the final product. Because after uh the client puts his trellis and and uh adds this landscaping. You're not gonna see any of this skeletal frame or the steel tubing that's there.
Yeah, but it's, we've got to approve it before that happens, so it's very difficult to.
It's like judging a a house before the.
Yeah, exactly.
Everything else, you know, it's tough, it's tough to do.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Well, I just, I'd like to hear from some of the butters, because I know they take in the time.
That's why I was asking if there was anyone else who I didn't put they'd like to give this evening.
Yeah, I think Sheila had her hand raised.
This is, uh, Sheila and Alex. We are the owners of Nine Maple Place.
Is that the house that is mostly impacted?
This is, this, this is our house. This is the solar panel. This affects us. Um, my understanding, and and maybe Mike can, um, you know, uh. Help me out with this is that obviously we need a special permit to put in this structure. Or whenever you need to put in a large structure, this is what, this is the process that we go for, go with. And I've also done some research and I've realized that, you know, a lot of people have had these disputes when it came to ground mounts all over the state of Massachusetts. Uh, this is not the first time this is occurring. And so I looked at, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section three. And I discovered that it specifically says that subjects which zoning may not regulate and says no zoning ordinance or bylaw. Shall prohibit or unreasonably regu- regulate the installation of solar energy systems. Or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy except where necessary to protect public health. Safety and or welfare. And I understand that the argument here is for the community aesthetics. You know, does it, you know, does it look nice? Does it make, you know, the community look nice or ugly and? That is basically i- if people consider it an eyesore or not. My understanding is is that. Uh, when it comes, since we've had so many subsections that were null and void, that Mass General Law would also make the. Community aesthetics null and void when it pertains to ground mount solar panels, not other buildings, but specifically this type of structure. Mike, could you elaborate maybe on that?
Yeah, it went, the, there is absolutely a, um, a policy. Under the law to encourage, um. Uh, solar, uh, the generation and and production of solar energy. Uh, and that provision specifically addresses that. It doesn't talk about ground mounts and as I, as I was saying, what. What we're doing is serving a public interest and it's serving an, an interest that the state has, um. Has emphasized in the, in the code, it's in the statute itself as a, um, as a valid and, and, uh. Important interest. But we're taking into account, we're not, we're not looking at shove this down anyone's throat, we, you know, it just wouldn't happen. What we're trying to do is find, um, a happy medium that addresses the concerns of the, um. Of the butters to the visual impact and whether they like it or not, the, the, the. The, the appeal, the appeal of the, oh, look and the impact on the neighborhood.
Oh, I'm sorry, so then, oh, I was just gonna say, do you think the, um, the planning board might like it? Let's say we, we lowered. You know, the solar panels, not from like twelve feet, but like down to like eight feet or something like that. Do you think if it was a little flatter, it would be more appealing?
Are there butters on the line who have a, a feeling about that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Alexander, who's speaking, didn't identify himself of the location, his, uh, his address, please.
Nine Maple Place, I'm the owner.
Thank you.
So.
Can I just chime in just to address the solar, um, section chap- chapter forty A, section three? Um, and we're well aware of that, but, um, one point is that that's in the broad sense of solar. And if you look in Foxborough, we do authorize it by right in numerous areas. And, um, our bylaw did pass Attorney General's muster, which we all know is pretty strict and, um, very. They take a hard look at exemptions and whatnot. So I just want to point out that this special permit provision did get passed by the Attorney General. And therefore is considered a, a sort of a, a acceptable review of a solar use. Want to clarify that question.
Thanks, Paige. I have a, is the, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but is the neighbor? Is the neighbor who, like, when you first want to Maple Place on the right, the one who's gonna be staring at this thing from his second sto- story, is he on the phone?
I believe he is. I believe his name is Peter.
We have a hand raised from someone named Peter.
Is that you?
Could try to figure out how to unmute him, let's see.
I just. I tried, but I can't. Peter, you're, um, you're on mute.
Peter, if you could try to unmute, there you go.
Okay, uh, yeah, hi, uh. Peter Jepson, I, I, I am the butter. I, can you start my video or?
No, we're just doing audio.
That's fine, that's fine. A couple of points, Mr. Corey stated that, um, the, my fence, I can't see this structure. Well, if any of you wanna come over and stand in my kitchen, I can tell you, I can see from the ground. All the way to the top of that panel. It completely blocks my kitchen view. Okay, so that's incorrect. Okay, number one. Uh, number two, it affects the value of my home. Anybody, if I was to put my home up for sale, anybody driving into my home, the first thing they'd notice is that ugly looking panel. And number three, Alex may want to consider replacing his windows before he puts this structure up. Cause I've been in that house many, many times on, with the previous owner, and it's a drafty old house.
Well, let's not be critical.
Yeah, let's not go there, please.
Well, well, we were talking about energy and energy savings.
Not, that's not what we're talking about.
Okay, all right, fair, fair, fair enough, fair enough. But I can see, I can see, I can see that structure. I can see the ground in front of it all the way to the top.
Hey, Peter.
Kitchen window.
Peter?
Yes.
I have a question for you, is the question came out from your neighbor, the Alexanders of if this was, or somebody asked it. If this was flattened versus the very sharp that it's at now. What are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are, it's ugly. And you, like, one of my neighbors said, you can't put lipstick on a pig. It's, it's an eyesore. There's no two ways around it. I mean, uh. What can I say? I look out my window and I see a huge panel, so you're gonna flatten it. Now it's a flat, huge panel. I can see it from my deck, I can see it from my porch, I can see it from my kitchen window, I can see it from every window on that side of the house.
So Peter, it was my impression with, from the last time that you, uh, uh, hearing, initial hearing, that. They, that, um, as a practical matter, you were not opposed to solar. It was strictly. The size and location of this particular ground array. Am I correct about that?
Yes, I assumed. He didn't say it was gonna be some huge ground installation. It was a very casual conversation. He was walking his dog, we met, and he said, oh, I'm gonna put in solar and led me to believe. You know, I think of that and I think it's gonna go on his roof. That's what I thought. It was gonna go on his roof. I'm not opposed to solar. I, as a matter of fact, I looked into solar, but I would have had to ask my neighbor to take down a tree, and I wouldn't dream of doing that.
So if, if, if by some fashion, um, it could be relocated somewhere else on the property that was not. As, um, impactful on you directly, you would oppose that?
Excuse me, uh, Kevin, if you could repeat the question.
I said if it was, if there was a possibility that it could be relocated somewhere else on the property that wasn't as impactful to you. Do you see yourself still opposing that?
Not at all. I- i- if it was, if it was in the original location and it was supposed to go in the rear of the house. I would, I would, no, not at all. It's, it's, it's the location that, that is the problem.
Are there any other butters besides Peter? Peter, that was helpful, thank you.
So just by way of reminder, if there's any butters who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, to do that, if you're on a phone, you can hit star nine. Um, but on your computer, you should find it in your controls, um, next to your name, I think.
And then when you do come on the line, if you could just state your full name and your address for the record. Paige or Kat does not have to state their name behind you.
Oh, no, is he behind you?
An occasional butter?
And he's cleaning.
So I don't see any other participant, oh, Sheila, uh, it, it looks like Alex, the, um, property owner has a, his hand raised.
Alex?
Yeah, the, the other thing, my, my wife, uh, just came in and said, well, what if we just flattened it, or it was like. Lower, lower than the fence, like it was two, like, small panels back to back or something like that. I understand that, you know, a neighbor might not wanna look at something. You know, I have a dumpster to the left of my house filled with scrap metal. And, you know, I, we live next to a, a railroad and, I mean, obviously, I'm an immigrant. I believe that if you own your own property, you do what you want with it. And, you know, I, you know, I, do I like looking at a scrap? I don't know, but I mean, it's, it's, it's theirs, it's, you know. They, they paid for that property. They can put the, uh, scrap metal there. I'm just trying to find a way to, you know, go out of my way to compromise with my neighbors. I'm not trying to, you know, make an enemy out of anyone, and this is kind of turned into, uh, thi- this, this turned into. You know, I thought this was just gonna be simple, oh, I'm gonna get some solar panels, and this became kind of a mountain, when I thought this was gonna be just a little molehill. Um, so I'm definitely willing to, to work on something. I know that I. We evaluated all the, uh, spots with Brad. If we stuck it in the rear, we would not be able to get. Um, any solar energy, unfortunately, it's. And we'd have to cut up nine trees and then the, the neighbor then, who's had those trees in their view could then complain. So it, it's just kind of a, you know, damned if I do, damned if I don't. Um, a situation that myself, my wife and my family has been, uh.
You can't.
And we try to, you know, good faith.
There's no way you can.
Yes, sorry, you broke out.
There's no way you can put them on the roof.
No, unfortunately not. We don't have this, this length of type of roof. I mean, that would have been the first choice. Unfortunately, we don't. We would, if, we, we put them in the roof on our old house, we just could not do it. Um, it would be ideal, I mean, it, it would be absolutely fantastic, and we thought about putting them on the detached garage. We can only fit nine panels out of thirty-six. So, I mean. We could put nine on the, the roof of the, um, garage, because I know we won't need a special building, and then we could lower our, um. This thing by nine panels, and that would significantly lower its, um, size. That's an alternative, but. I mean, we're trying to meet people halfway here in aesthetics, but, you know. Does everyone have a beautiful house, or does everyone have beautiful Christmas or Halloween ornaments? No, but I don't go to their houses and complain about it. But at the same time, I understand that, you know, we, you, you, you still try to be nice to your neighbors and you still try to, you know. Think of them when you do these projects. And it's not our intention to piss anyone off or make our yard ugly, you know, I have, I'm, I know I'm the youngest homeowner. I have the biggest property on the lot. And, you know, I'm just working hard to make it nice and, and make sure that we can have another child someday. And, and, and we did replace the windows, and, and, and that's, I'll end it there.
One more person?
Peter had his hand up.
Okay, sorry. So do I.
Peter, you're on mute.
Uh, yeah, and the other point that I, I haven't heard brought up, but, um, there's this thing called an attractive nuisance. In the, in the insurance industry. And that's why you can't put a pool in your front yacht, because if some kid goes over there and climbs on this thing. And gets hurt, somebody's gonna get sued. And, uh, I would think that's a, that's a thing that this board may wanna consider.
Well, that's true, because I work in the insurance industry. If, if, if that's a risk that the homeowner wishes to take on. That's up to hi- him versus us. And the other, the one thing I would say, though, from an insurance perspective, Alex, is that, um. Is that, you know. Peter has a point. If, if you haven't talked to your homeowner's, homeowner's insurance company. You may very well want to for the reason Peter mentioned.
Well, well, if the town grants the, the permit, I would think that the town has some liability too. If, God forbid, a kid ever get hurt on that, on that structure.
No, it's like we give building permits, we give, we give permits, you know, all different boards give permits. There's no liability on the part of the town. Ryan? You're on mute.
Can I speak?
Kevin, you good?
Yeah, he's up.
Yes, Brian, just state your name.
Sure, Brian Cassie, twenty-eight Coacasset Street, so I'm right, I'm right on the corner of Coacasset and Maple Place. And, uh, so my mother-in-law owned the house for twenty years. And in the backyard, which the owner and the, uh, planners and the lawyer. Uh, say doesn't have any sunshine, uh, we built, uh, Dahlia garden. Uh, and dahlias, we built a Dahlia garden and about four hundred dahlias grew in the backyard all summer long. And, uh, produced brilliant flowers in August and September in the brilliant sunshine in the backyard. So I really don't know what they're looking at. The backyard has abundant sunshine all during this, the main. Uh, season when, um. When energy's gonna be produced, April, May, June, July, August, September. That, that time of year, this backyard has a lot of sunshine. So to say that the backyard doesn't have any sunshine and it's unfeasible is, uh, is an amazing stretch to me. Because in the whole neighborhood, that's the place that I picked out to, to, we picked out to build the garden. And one day, FTD balloon came flying over and looked over the edge and looked down and said, nice garden. This is a true story. That place is sunny, and in the wintertime, if it's not sunny. That's because lots of places aren't sunny, because the sun's lower in the sky and the angle is different, but. In the wintertime is not when you're producing vast amount of energy. And besides, if you take a solar panel that's. Positioned towards the sun so it can collect as much solar energy as possible, and then put it flat, it's not gonna work either. This whole idea of taking the angle and changing it to, um. To satisfy me and the other neighbors is ridiculous. That's what I have to say right now.
Can I respond to that?
You may.
All right, so as, uh, the project manager here for, for Isaacson, um, and. You know, qualified to, to speak on the efficiency of solar panels and when they're placed, and is also a former organic farmer. Um, I can tell you that when you look at available sunlight, it's not the direct, uh, comparison to. Building a garden and also putting solar panels in, uh, in the same area. You, you can have a garden, it can be sunny. Um, you're, you're not gonna base a, um, solar system site. Um, based on the same amount of sunlight that a garden's gonna receive, because this is about not only production of sunlight, but it's also about economics. And we need to put this system, and that's why we chose the spot that we did, uh, to see the best return on investment for our client. Um, if you were to put this system in the rear of the property, the efficiency of the system drops by over forty percent. Meaning that your production is dropping by over forty percent. Meaning that instead of producing ninety thousand dollars worth of power over a twenty-year period, you know, it's producing fifty thousand dollars, uh, over that period. Um, so the ROI or the break-even point goes from, you know, a six-year break-even to, you know, eighteen or whatever it may be. And ethically, I cannot advise my client to move forward with a, with a system that's in the rear property. When there's a break-even point that that's far along. Now, that's his choice, but I would, uh, not advise to move forward. We looked at every single site, we looked at every single location, we looked at rooftop. If this project is gonna happen. Um, it, it has to be where it is, unfortunately.
Evan? I mean, we've talked, everyone I think who's wanted to speak has had the chance to speak. How do we, how do we, what's the next step here? Do we, we vote? Do we tell them where we're likely to vote so they can maybe go back to the drawing board? Not where they want it to be, what do we do?
Well, we could do nothing and just say, well, say, we'll give it some consideration and vote on another night. We can, we can just take a straw poll. I don't, I'm not sure I would recommend that. Uh, you know, I, I'd ask Paige what her, what her perspective is on this.
Um, I think I agree that, um, really the testimony has all been given. We've, we get, I think the board gets the flavor of both sides at this point. Um, I think it's coming down to a vote, or the only thing I just heard was, um, from the applicant himself. And I don't know if it's feasible, but is. And I don't know that this would even fly, but is there any combination of using the garage to mitigate some of what's out there? Yeah, I did. I'm trying to find a middle ground. Um, I don't know if there's a middle ground, but I just heard that garage option. I don't know what impact that would have on the scope of this project, how the neighbor, whether. There's anything that would make the neighbors, whether that's your threshold. I mean, again, you all get to decide in the findings. Where you feel it falls. So I guess I'd say either it's time to vote. Or if you want to recon, you know, look at more options, if they're even viable. I don't know.
I, if, if they were going to look at. Potentially putting some, I mean, I, I think people very much can get where my head's at personally. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board. Um, as it stands, I would not vote in, in support of this permit. Um, I would have no hesitation to hold off on a vote if, if the applicant wants to come back with. Here's what it looks like if some of it's on the garage and some of it's on the ground. Now, I'm not guarantee, I mean, we may look at that and have the same, I may look at that and have the same reaction that I'm having to the way it is now. But, you know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
You know, part of the problem here is not just for the board, but also for the applicant is. If we hadn't run into this issue with the, with the, uh, the building permit being issued. These issues would have been talked about before, you know, you placed it. You would have come to us and said, here's where we want to put it. And then the neighbors would have had their chance to weigh in and we would have had a chance to listen to what they had to say. And we might have said to you, well. You can, you, if you want to do this, you're going to have to find a, a, a location that's different and let the, and let your applicant. Um, decide whether it's financially feasible for him or her or not. And, and, uh, and, and, and that they, then they would have to make a determination. Um, about whether they thought that this was still a viable, a viable option for them. You know, in, in, in a certain sense, you know, uh, uh, we have to do the job we have to do and, and, and it's not necessarily an easy thing. But it may come down to the fact that, you know, uh, you get a decision that's not going to be happy.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, I, I've had a couple of thoughts that. I don't want to, you know, discuss with, um, Brad and our client, um, you know, while I'm taking up the board's time. If we could continue this to the next meeting, I'd like to, uh. Um, I, I, I'd like to talk to Brad and, and Alex about. A couple of other ideas. I may be way off, but a couple of other ideas and perhaps run them by, I'm sorry, I don't have Peter's last name. Uh, run it by Peter, um. Um, see if we can, um, find a middle ground.
Maybe you can also both Peter and. Brian.
Cassie.
Cassie is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And any other, any other abutter who's on the phone. I don't want anyone to think.
Yeah, there were, there were other abutters across the street who gave testimony the last time. Mr. Kagan, and I can't remember the other gentleman's name.
And Ashonda's on the phone. She's in a butter across the street as well. I know that.
So, I mean, I'm not opposed to, to, uh, you, you taking the time to, to have further discussion with your client. Um, as long as, uh, other members of the board aren't. If you think you can come to an accommodation with the neighbors and, and the applicant, I mean, that would be preferable.
But then I.
Really like to try.
Yeah, and I, I, I think Mike, you've, you, you've got a good idea and a good plan there. And I think. You know, talking to Brad and talking to Alex and his wife, but also including Peter and Brian and other butters. So that ideally you guys come back in our next meeting and say, okay, we're all on the same page.
Right. Right, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out one thing if I could.
Please.
And, um, I just checked with Paige for clarification. Anything that they go to a roof mount with is not required a special permit.
Correct.
So just so that all the abutters know that if there's a modification done to this. That anything that goes on the roof goes on the roof. Period. So the permit would only be applicable to what modifications are made on the ground, right?
So the next meeting is, uh, January twenty eighth. Diana, do we have anything on the agenda yet? I vote no.
Nothing, nothing on the agenda yet.
Okay, so we could continue this until, um, January twenty eighth at seven fifteen P M.
At, at seven fifteen?
Yeah.
The January twenty eighth, seven fifteen, a butter's notices will not be sent out. Um, we are ninety-nine point nine 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 percent sure we'll be on Zoom again. Um, so we'll see you back here. So the board should make a motion and to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay, one at a time, all of us. I, I, I say aye.
I say aye.
Aye.
Jeff says aye.
Tracy?
She's muted. This one, yes.
Tracy says aye.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. See you then.
All right. So, uh, the next item on our agenda. Um, is an informal discussion for possible, uh, site plan violation for oil time two twenty-seven Coacassett Street. I need to recuse myself from that portion of the meeting because, uh. The gentleman in question happens to be, um, uh, a resident of mine. So I think that Mr. Brassi is going to take the chairman's position for that.
Um, I'd like to open this up by stating that, um, Gabby Jordan, myself, Bill Buckley, Bay Colony Engineering. Who is representing, um. Mr. Lepetto walked the site the other day. Mr. Lepetto is in agreement that. The site work portion of his business is going to be liquidated. And he will be removing all things from the property. We discussed the opportunity of him. Moving equipment to. Possibly another site until he can find a, you know, a buyer for them. And, um. I think it's pretty much being taken care of. We just have to look at some of the minutia and kind of.
But why don't we allow Mr. Buckley to do his presentation?
Okay. Mr. Buckley?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm here with Frank Spillane. And, um, Frank is going to take the lead.
As the chairman indicated, uh, there was a site walk done out there, uh, with Mr. Buckley. Uh, some of the material there is so frozen that some of it will be moved until a later date. But Ms. Malapato is, uh, working, uh, with regard to the other issues that were discussed. Uh, to appease the board and the neighbor as best we can.
Um, a conversation that I had had earlier today, Frank. Um, Mr. Lepetto's primary business is oil delivery. Um, residential, commercial. This is the high point of heating season. And. I think that. You know, we should allow him a little bit of time to. Get the product out of there. As you mentioned, it's frozen at this point. But I, he has a primary concern with maintaining his clients' needs for oil at this point. So I would like to suggest that. Anything he can do as far as moving the heavy equipment. Out of there in a timely manner. And then possibly a June one for completion of cleanup of the side of the extra materials that are there.
Uh, just so the board and, uh, chairman understand, all that equipment, even though it has site work. Uh, stated on the side is all owned by Oil Man and is used within that, uh, business. Uh, he does oil deliveries, but he also does oil tank removals, installation and things like that.
Okay.
He uses some of that big equipment for that purpose. Uh, some of the, um, other. Uh, equipment that was there that doesn't have to do with, uh, Oil Man. Um, either has been removed or will be removed. Um, he's finding another location, uh, for all that equipment. And he hopes to find a location big enough to also, uh, handle some of the big equipment that Oil Man. Uses, you know, the big trucks that he had there.
All right. Paige, could you speak to the, uh, special permit, please, as far as what the conditions were on the original permit issued? As far as the outside storage of equipment?
Sure. So I was just taking a look at that. Um, just to clarify, the planning board's special permit scope was, um. Looked like it's focused on the water resource district. Um, it looks like they went to the zoning board of appeals for pre-existing non-conforming. Um, but the one condition that I do see that pertains to the, that is, uh, number eight. It says there shall be no outdoor storage of vehicles and materials except for the oil time, oil and propane delivery business. Um, oil delivery vehicles shall be parked inside the building at night. So those are a couple of those conditions. But really, I think, um, I have taken a look at the zoning board, um, decision, but I have a feeling that would have other conditions. But that would be enforced by the building department.
Chairman, um, there were no, um, conditions within the, uh, Z B A decision.
Frank? Um, or somebody who knows this answer. I mean, are those the things that patients spread out? Are those being adhered to?
Um, at the site, there is some material that is being stored outside.
Okay, but that would be part of what would need to be removed by June first, right?
Yes.
And then. Um, and then oil delivery vehicles are being parked inside the building at night?
Um, to my knowledge, I don't know if all of them are. Some of them are.
Okay, well. The permit says all of them are to be, so if that's not happening. The owner should be reminded of the. Condition.
Absolutely.
I have a copy of the, uh, the Z B A decision and, uh. Um, Mr. Spillane is correct. There were no, um, conditions added to the, uh, decision from the Z B A.
I know there are some of butters on the phone, um. You know, based on what's been shared. Any questions, reactions, comments?
Well, if I could just clarify that, I want to point out that it's the, um, the, the abutters who, um, prompted this. Uh, the neighbors, um, did file an appeal with the building department and that's what we are ultimately responding to. So I want to acknowledge that, um, you know, the neighbors were instrumental in bringing this forward. I think we have their attorney on the line.
Yes, I've been muted.
No, we can hear you. We can hear you.
You're, you're fine.
I'm sorry. I've been trying to talk for a while. It looks like I was muted. Thank you very much, um. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, Ms. Duncan, my name is, uh, Ed Valenzola. An attorney with Valenzola Law Group in Mansfield. And that's correct. Back on December ninth, um, I sent in a letter to both the zoning enforcement officer. And to the, uh, the planning director regarding the violations at the site. The two thousand three zoning board decision does not have specific conditions. That was just basically to tear down the structure that existed. Build a larger structure so that they could, uh, park vehicles inside. There's references made to that. It's the two thousand five special permit that, uh, that addresses, uh, that has the conditions in it. And makes a specific finding that the, uh, you know, the, uh, site can be used for retail, retail oil distribution. Um, I don't know if you've, any of you have seen the letter I sent in on December ninth. It had a number of exhibits and photographs. And I had laid out some of the conditions that we think are violated. I, I think more needs to be done here than. Simply remove some of the trucks and vehicles. There's large piles of mulch. There's concrete barriers that have been set up, you know, similar to what a, uh, a business would do when they're selling mulch and. Uh, loam, you know, to contractors. Mulch and loam are delivered to the site. Uh, they're picked up, it's picked up and removed from the site. Trucks, when they dump, you hear the, the back tailgate slamming. Uh, creates a lot of dust. The piles of mulch and loam, uh, you know, caused, because especially because of the location, you're causing a lot of water runoff. Uh, to be directed onto my client's property. My clients, by the way, Maurice and Sharon Brodeur. They're at two seventeen Coacassett. So as you face the site two twenty-seven. Uh, they're the part, they're the house to the right with a long driveway. You have to go up, up back. Um, and I think one of the exhibits I did, uh, provide to you has a, a site plan showing a location. So some of the conditions are, yes, one of them was read already. There's no outside storage of vehicles and materials except for oil time. Oil and propane delivery business. They're required to maintain the drainage system in accordance with operation and maintenance plan for stormwater B M Ps. Failure to maintain the drainage system will be considered a violation of this approval. We don't think the drainage system has been or is being maintained. In fact, we think it's probably covered up. Uh, by a lot of the materials and other activities that occur in that property. They went to, they got a, uh, they had gone to conservation for an order of conditions. But we see no certificate of compliance. Filed with the registry of deeds. And I also did a public document request. And I saw that there were none in any of the files, whether it was conservation, building or planning department. Indicating that they ever obtained. A certificate of compliance regarding the conditions that were set forth in the two thousand and five special permit. In addition to removing the various, uh, you know, uh, aspects of the, this business that is. Called a, uh, I guess it's excavation and, um. There's actually a sign out front. Um, the trucking and excavation business, the sign out front, it, it's part this, uh. It has at the top of it Oil Man ink, and you've probably all seen it when you drive by. And on the bottom half, it says site work specialist, trucking and excavation. Um, so, you know, that should not be advertised any longer that that type of business is operating. As you know, this is a. Uh, pretty much a residential zone, pre-existing non-conforming oil business use that the planning board in two thousand and five. Um, you know, allowed it to, uh, continue with the very specific, uh, conditions, uh, that are described in the decision. See. Some of the photographs I gave you, uh, show excavators, large dump trucks that have the, uh, excavation business name on the trucks. Um, loam, loam sifting machines, earth moving equipment. None of that can, I, I think be used for. An oil business and at least, uh, as I understand how an oil business would operate. So, yeah, other than that, I think the, the important thing is to, uh. Um, there's a PVC pipe and this is also pointed out i- in the letter. Um, and it backs up, a lot of, when it rains or there's ponding. Um. And this is, this goes to the O M P. And we, we just don't think there's any compliance with that. I'm not sure if that's the zoning enforcement officer or the planning board. Because it's one of your conditions in the, in the special permit, uh, to see if they're, they're following the O M P. Um, I'm not sure anyone's looked at that or, or in fact, if it's been brought to your attention, to be fair. But because of this illegal use of the property. Um, the loam, the mulch piles, the trucks, the activity. Um, I, I would respectfully suggest that, um. Whether it's the zoning enforcement officer or someone else, take a look. Um, you know, at that site and how, uh, whether or not the O M P is being complied with and what, uh. What needs to be done to get it in compliance if it's not. So I, I understand this is an informal meeting. I, I am, I think my clients are going to be very pleased and what I was pleased to hear in the beginning that. Um, the property owner recognizes there's a violation, is going to take steps, um, to rectify it and, uh. We certainly, uh, will be patient as well as one of the members pointed out. It's a, we're in the middle of the winter, in the middle, middle of a pandemic, so. We anticipate the, uh, property owner will, will, you know, move as quickly as possible under the circumstances and will cer- certainly work with them. Thank you.
Mr. Spillane, would you like to clarify any of these points? You're muted? Okay.
This, this is the first I've heard of the letter. I've not seen it, so I can't, uh. Speak to it directly, uh, but we'd be more than willing to meet with, uh, the neighbor and his attorney and, um. The, the town planner and any member of the, uh, board to go out there and look at the site and to discuss what's out there. We're in agreement that the material, uh, will be moved. Uh, once, uh, the spring comes and thaws. Mr. Lepato has agreed he will remove all of that. Uh, with regard to whether it's following the, um. Operation maintenance plan. Um, we haven't, Mr. Buckley and I have not really looked at that to see what's going on. and I have not really looked at that to see what's going on there and how everything is draining. But we can go out there and look at it again, determine how it's going. We talked to Mr. Lepardo about water drainage, and he indicated to us that no water is draining on their property. But we'd be happy to go back out there and look at it and listen to the butter to see if we can resolve any issues.
If I may briefly?
Yes.
With all due respect, I don't want to put my clients in a position of negotiating with the property owner or council. What I suggested, we'll cooperate, and maybe I misspoke, I meant that we understand, you know, the times we're in right now, and we're in the middle of the winter. We'll certainly be patient. We already have been, my letter went out December 9th to the zoning enforcement officer and to the planning director, because, you know, this is an issue for the town to resolve under chapter 40A. And I don't, having done this for many years, I don't want to put my client in a position of having to, you know, negotiate a compromise with the butter, because there's nothing, unlike your last hearing, where you have your residential property owners. In this situation, I don't know that there's anything that can be done by way of compromise. The use is illegal. It's way beyond the, the oil business use that was allowed by the special permit. So I, again, I don't want to put my client in a position of having to, you know, defend themselves. This is an issue for the town to enforce the zoning bylaws of the 2005 special.
I don't believe anybody other than yourself brought up the word compromise. The attorney for Mr. Lepardo has stated very clearly that they are going to take care of the problem.
I understand. No, I appreciate that. I was just clarifying, because I think I misspoke, and hopefully that was helpful. Thank you.
So it sounds like the next step is for Bill and Frank and the butters and the owner of Oil Man to?
No.
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 Tracy, not at all. There really doesn't need to be that. Mr. Buckley will go out to the site, make sure if there is any water runoff, that is taken care of. That does not need to include the butter. And then everything else is handled between our board, Mr. Spillane, Mr. Buckley.
Clarification.
Becoming compliant.
So, to be clear, Ron, so is my understanding that you expect the site to be brought back into compliance with the 2005 decision by June 1st? And if for any reason, the applicant were to want to amend anything or change anything, they'd need to apply to the board for modification?
Yes. If, if Mr. Lepardo chose to decide to keep the excavating portion of the business, then he would have to come back in and apply for an amendment to the special permit decision.
Would that, I'm sorry, may I ask?
Yes.
A question on that. Would that be to the planning board, or because it's, that would also be a non-conforming use, they would have to go to the zoning board on that issue to expand the non-conforming use?
They'd probably have to go to the zoning board, if that's what they did previously.
That's what I believe.
And Paige, if I can just jump in, it sounds as if that they may have to appear before us for the use matters that were not previously approved within the site plan.
Right. I think that I'd kind of do both. I think that it's a deal with
That's what I thought, too.
Use, and then if it was a water resource district, it would come to us.
I understand. I'm sorry.
I think the bottom line is, is that they have a certain amount of time to remedy this situation, and either they remedy it, or they get approval to do something different. But I think we want to make it clear that there's a deadline for that.
My, my understanding is that if the use is allowed by your bylaw, then they can certainly come back to the planning board to modify the special permit and say, "Look, we want to expand it. This is a use that's allowed." But where the use is not allowed in that zone, the excavation business, I respectfully, I don't think that the planning board would be able to entertain that. And it would go to the zoning board, but you know, there's no use variances any longer. But that's where they would have to go to try to expand on the pre-existing non-conforming use and say it's not more detrimental, and it's somehow, you know, it's, it's still the oil business, even though it's not. So I think.
What we're saying, they'd have to go to the zoning board, and then maybe the planning board. I mean, if they got through zoning, maybe to us. So I think the point is, Ron, is there any deadline? So like, can they wait till June 1st and then apply for modification? Or is there any sort of, like, do we want to have this buttoned up by June 1st?
Well, I'd like to let Mr. Spillane respond right now, because he raised his hand, and then we'll get back to this point, because we may not need to have this discussion.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Lepardo has no intent at this point to run any excavation business out of there. All those trucks are for his oil man business. He very rarely does some of that work. He used to run excavation business back in the early 2000s, and ran it out of East Belcher Road, but he closed it down when he lost the site. He has no intention of going for any approvals anywhere, even if they were allowed, for any excavation business. And his intent right now is just to clean up the site so that it meets all the requirements of the approval from the planning board.
Great.
That was what the impression I had from the meeting on site the other day.
Great.
A question. So I understand the date is going to be June 1st. And am I also correct in hearing that there won't be any excavation work? Because I know my clients are going to be concerned when the spring comes, April and May, is there going to be mulch moving around? Is there going to be loam piles being moved around by the excavator and the other equipment that's there? Or is that going to stop completely, except to the extent to remove those things from the property?
Mr. Spillane?
To best of my knowledge, yes. All he's going to do is remove that and cease storing that business there.
I think that should be clearly articulated, that I think this board, and I'm sure this board has the authority, but I think, yeah, it should just convey that right now, that is not an allowed use. The building department has sought some, some sort of enforcement. They've asked us to sort of step in. So I think it should be clear that there'll be no site work operation, because it's not allowed by zoning. The leeway is being given in consideration of circumstances and the time we're in and the weather, but not to give them the spring season for landscaping. In my opinion, but.
No, that was my opinion as well, so.
So what do we do to, to close this? Would we write a letter to the involved parties, or, you know, specifying what items have to be taken? Or is enough of an understanding now for all parties involved? This is what we expect the Oil Man to do.
I think that is for us to write a letter to the building department, because they've asked us to look into this format. So I think since it was a request for enforcement action, we would respond to the building commissioner and let him know sort of the agreement, and then he will, you know, he's the one who would take final action. But I think he'll go along with whatever the planning board decides.
And then to clutter up other individual files, you can see, see the printed bodies?
Exactly.
Okay. I, my December 9th letter, I'm happy to share it with Mr. Spillane, as I said earlier, but it went to the town. So I'll send that to them. And I would, again, respectfully submit that if you want to use my letter, what I just said to you is basically outlined in my letter, that provides you with some guidance in terms of what we think needs to be done. And, you know, whether you agree, if the building inspector agrees, another question, but, you know. So I would ask that my December 9th letter be circulated. If you need additional copies of, I'm happy to drop them off. I think it'll, it'll provide you with some guidance.
Thank you. Right. So we'll write a letter to the building department. We'll incorporate December 9th letter contents and go from there.
Yeah, I think that's it for the informal on this subject. Mr. Weinfeld, you're back.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bressi. All right. That matter being dealt with, we have continued informal discussion on one lot subdivision of Orchard Place with Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lynch is here with us this evening, and Jeff Lovely is here with us this evening. So if you could unmute them, I guess. Jeff is actually going to take the lead.
I think I'm unmuted, but I can't start video. That's up to you, whether you want to see me.
No more loaded questions.
Probably better than the lovely law logo.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, well.
There we are.
Okay, so I'm not sure where you want to start. I've been working on this with Mr. Lynch and Mr. Buckley for a bit. I've done a few things, and I understand it's a little bit of an interesting project. But one of the issues I consider to be a non-issue, and that is access. The parcel that Mr. Lynch proposes to develop has an absolute right-of-way over Orchard Place. That right-of-way carries with it the right to improve it, the right to install utilities under it, and any other necessary right. There's much case law and statutory guidance on that.
And, and, and just let me know what your responses. So I'm presuming that, that your interpretation is based on a variety of historical documents relative to former ownership and current ownership of the lots as they's transferred. Is that right?
Well, I've looked at the title, but basically, the, the chain of title of this property clearly provides for a right-of-way over Orchard Place. I've actually looked at it before, because this, I'm actually a direct abutter to that with our property at 41 Main Street. So it, I just think it's very clear that this parcel has, has clear access over Orchard Place. Now, I have spoken and communicated with Attorney Costello, Town Council. I don't even, we did not discuss that issue. I don't really think.
I was just trying to understand, you know, you know, how you came in. Can I interrupt you for one minute? Because in order to, you know, in order to make sure that this works this evening, because there's been a lot of discussion amongst the neighbors, as I know, as I know you're aware, I've committed to them just to read into the record a letter that they sent to us. And that will, kind of in exchange for them not having to repeat similar objections or the same objections, you know, ad infinitum this evening. So just give me one minute to read this letter into the record, and then we can continue, if you don't mind. This letter is dated January 11th, 2021. Subject is Orchard Place Development Project, and it reads, "Your members of the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, we the undersigned are writing to you to voice our collective concerns as neighbors and butters to the Orchard Place Development Project. COVID meeting restrictions have severely limited our ability to participate in the normal process. In a November planning board meeting, only a small number of neighbors were able to attend in person, not unexpected, but the Zoom alternative provided was not monitored, and the result was a poor audio connection for attendees and no ability for participants to communicate with the board. As future meetings are anticipated to be completely virtual, we want to ensure that our voices are heard and that our concerns are properly addressed by the town. The proposed development project involves construction of a multifamily building in the center of a block of 100-plus-year-old historic homes with predominantly single family. As neighbors and butters, we have the following objections to this project. The proposed site has, this is their opinion, has no roadway frontage, and is surrounded by the backyards of seven to eight homes on all sides, with additional homes experiencing a negative visual impact. Access to this island development is via a private way, which is currently serving as a driveway and parking area for a homeowner. The lot is small for this type of development, with the resulting building and pavement covering most of the property, and requires the planning board to approve multiple variances to allow it to go forward. Due to the undersized lot and pavement requirements, all vegetation, including at least two mature, healthy trees, one an enormous copper beach, will be removed, resulting in a, in they have the word, in quotes, barren, end quotes, lot. The impacts to us as a butters include a lack of privacy, safety concerns for the increased traffic, and many small children who currently play within feet of the access road, and reduced property values from what we will be, and obviously out-of-place development in all of our backyards. We believe the town will also be negatively impacted by this project, more suited for Cambridge or Boston, right in the middle of one of the few remaining historical blocks in Foxborough. All of us take pride in our historic neighborhood and maintain our homes and properties in that light. If allowed to go forward by the town of Foxborough, we would take this development as a direct affront to our efforts to maintain the historic importance and character of this neighborhood. Signed, on Bentwood Street, number nine, Bob and Melissa Foster, number five, Courtney and Matt Hocker, number 11, Matt and Marjorie Crozier, number seven, Liz and Alden Kilcoyne, number 12, Marla and John DeReese, and number 10, Sarah and Dan DeMello. And on Baker Street, number 16, Mary Ann Baker, number 14, Bob and Kathy Hickey, number 22, Molly and Dan Kelleher, number 24, Will and Teresa Harper, number 13, Michael Selby, number nine, Tom and Maureen Kraus, number eight, Shilla Smith. On Main Street, number 39, Wanda and Ben Filbert, and on Orchard Place, number eight, Ellen Sampson, number six, Jean and Brian Cameron. CCing Foxborough Planning Board and the Town Manager. So thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. You're, you're still muted.
Yeah, we, Paige sent us that letter, so thank you. Do you want me to respond to, to that letter in particular?
You're, you're entitled to. I just really, I committed to them that I would read it in so that their concerns were heard, and they didn't have to all appear and, you know, extend the meeting longer than needed.
No, we, we understand their concerns. You know, this, this site does have roadway frontage. We're before your board to extend that roadway as necessary to, to create the 100 feet of frontage that's required. And we're, we're hoping to receive certain waivers that have been requested informally. The lot is, is really not small for this type of development. It's either a single family or a duplex. It's not a multifamily. You know, the lot would comply with all of the dimensional guidelines of the zoning bylaw, if it's, if it's permitted. And I'm sure Mr. Lynch is sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors and would want his lot to be attractive and saleable, so it would not be a barren lot. He would only remove trees that he had to, to remove. So, you know, we understand that the, the, the neighbors and their concerns, you know, we all live in houses where trees used to be, you know, it does, it does happen. But Mr. Lynch is a professional developer and tries to retain as many trees as he can. So we, we think that the, the issues really are the access over Orchard Place, which is really a non-issue. I think there's been some discussion about the fact that a shed in a parking area had been installed in Orchard Place at some point in the past. That would be at most a title issue, and it would be a title issue that we're not concerned about, because the right to access over Orchard Place is a deeded easement, and it's really not long enough. It would require a continuous period of 20 years in order to cut off that access. And that shed was built in about '04 or '05. The condo was created there in '01, I believe. So they can't block that access. And I believe Mr. Lynch is willing to work with them, you know, depending on how things work out, to possibly relocate a shed and parking in a way that works for both parties. The other issue that we've been looking at is the impact and application of the historic district. And this is something that I had discussed and communicated with Attorney Costello about last week. I believe your board received a copy of my letter, as did he, and we've received his response. My legal opinion is that certainly the historical district does not apply in the event that the board, as it has done in the past for this type of development, grants the waivers to not require the construction of a large cul-de-sac. If the cul-de-sac is required, I I still don't think that the historical district applies and controls. And I believe that, although I was a little bit unclear about Attorney Costello's letter that he, he provided, I read it as saying that your board should continue with its process, whether informal or formal, without taking the historical district into account. Then, if the final decision is made not to grant waivers, either, it was unclear to me whether he was of the opinion that it did apply or that we would pick it back up at that time. But I believe, based on the wording of the historical district bylaw, that it's premised on architectural features. It's really not. It didn't foresee roadways as being within its ambit. If this house is built, it's going to be built entirely outside of the historic district. The only impact of it would be the construction of a roadway. Whether it applies to a roadway is unclear. I don't think it does. And if it, even if it does, it has to be visible from a public street, which it will not be. So even though we, I, I fully understand it's a little bit of an unusual project in the sense that it's coming down this existing private roadway. It's sort of in the middle of an area that's been previously developed. But all of the factors line up for this one. It, I think, and it really comes down to whether your boards inclined to grant the waivers or require the, the full subdivision roadway.
So let me just respond to that for a moment, Jeff. I mean, I have, I have Attorney Costello's letter here. And I was on the phone call with him, Paige Duncan, Gabby Jordan. And there were two members of the commission who were on that call. They were Tom Kraus and Trish Selby. So I think you've encapsulated a good portion of it. I think he does clearly reference the fact that in its current condition, under the informal hearing process, he does not feel that it applies. And he feels that, you know, at this time, I said, he, he, let me just quote from this. "At this time, I suggest that the Planning Board continue its dialogue with the developers representative on roadway construction, a conceptual subdivision, and other project requirements within the board's purview in due course, and render formal determinations on whether applications or requests the developer ultimately submits without consideration of historic district bylaw ramifications. In the event that the developer does propose a development that would include the construction and/or alteration of any structures or buildings within the historic district, it will be required to request a certificate of appropriateness from the commission. As needed, we will revisit the role and scope of review of the Historic District Commission under Section 145 of the bylaws, if any, if any, based on the final development proposal." So the way I interpret that, and I'm not an attorney, is just that, you know, right now, today, there's really nothing to discuss. And then based on what you actually, the final preliminary or definitive application that's made, that may alter in some fashion or may not.
Right. I, I don't disagree with you. I think your, his opinion was that your board would sort of continue with this process without taking historic into account. However, let's say the board decides ultimately either to, you know, prohibit the project, in which case we'd have to figure out our course of action, or to not grant the waivers, then that would arguably trigger at least further discussion, a condition or anything like that. But I don't, I think that your board is not really going to have to worry about the historic district. And by, you know, I did look at Foxborough subdivision regulations and, and, and some of the zoning bylaws. And, you know, I know it's typical that you establish that the project is feasible. But that really only requires the input of the Board of Health, really, to make sure that the soils are suitable in the Conservation Commission. So, for example, so your subdivision bylaws are silent as to whether proving out anything has to include non-zoning compliance with town bylaws. And by way of example, the special permit for an open space residential development has a little bit different language, requiring something to prove, you know, requiring a developer to prove out the conventional. But even that really only relates to Board of Health and zoning bylaw considerations. So, you know, even though that doesn't strictly apply to subdivision anyway, but it doesn't even apply in a, in a special permit for an OSRD.
So can I chime in here? Can I chime in here? Because this is just going on so long. The reason we went for the historic is because we're doing this thing that's sort of outside. Well, not outside, but the Planning Board does this thing that, you know, we try to make sure our project passes the straight face test. So I know what you're saying, Jeff. But the, the Planning Board wouldn't approve waivers to, you know, that basically if you showed a road rail going over wetlands, something like, and that's not zoning. So I agree that historic doesn't need to get involved. And I understand where Town Council's coming from technically, but I think the reason this was raised is that the board is being asked to waive provisions, and it's be asked to be to do so in a way that they haven't done, in a manner they haven't done before. So that's why you guys are looking at this extra hard, is that you are be, you know, the first project, the first proposal was submitted with half a cul-de-sac. We then had to, they had to find a way to get frontage with it more, with a complying cul-de-sac, and that's why it's now extended into a portion of the district. It would not be built, but you certainly have to keep in mind that that would then put a portion of a road in the historic district. So that's up to you to decide, you know, subjectively what you think about it. So, and I think the, the question that you're going to be asked, you know, you're asking, being asked for a lot of waivers is whether it's in the interest of the community. You know, I mean, we know it's in the interest of the developer. We understand sort of that, that interest. But you all are charged with looking at the greater good, and I think you've always done a good job looking at waivers. So I think all that aside, at this point, this is not a formal decision. This is an informal thing to guide this group as to what their next steps are going to be. I think it's, you know, now back to the balls in your court as to whether you're comfortable with the waivers being sought based on all the information you now have.
You mean the board?
Yeah, that. What did I say?
You said you. So I'm, I'm presuming.
Yeah, you, you, yes.
Yes.
I think we're, we're, we're okay with the waivers we're requesting. So, so in, in, in terms of, in terms of those waivers, and I, I do understand that the concern, but it's, you know, my experience is that it just makes sense not to require a full subdivision roadway because it actually does have some indirect benefits. It, it involves less impervious. There are very few, you know, safety concerns. I think we're proposing an 18-foot wide improved roadway to, to access this lot. It would really service. I'm not sure if the, if the Gibson property out front has access to it, but I think it would service three units. There are no safety issues. It's not going to cause undue congestion. All of the lot sizes actually exceed the minimums in the R15 district. So, yeah, it's, it's, it, we totally understand that it's discretionary with your board whether to grant the waivers. We just suggest that they, they kind of make sense for this type of a project. And I know it's, it's a small subdivision, and the small ones always come with all the problems of the big ones. But that's what we're, we're left with here in Foxborough. There are very few big pieces of land to do a conventional classic subdivision on. So these are the ones that we are left with. You know, we, that we do have a need for housing. This is hopefully going to create some additional housing. You know, I, I think that, you know, buffering and vegetation can be provided to partially address some of the concerns of the neighbors. And Mr. Lynch is sensitive to that. But to, to require the full cul-de-sac would be sort of an unnecessary alteration of the landscape, in my opinion. But I, I do understand that it's, this one has a few complexities that we don't look at in the typical one.
It does. And I think that, you know, I, I think a lot of sensitivity needs to be paid to, I don't want to diminish the sensitivity of those on Baker Street or concerned about the historic district. But I think that the most, the most impacted neighbors are really going to be the ones on Benwood Street. Because they abut the property in a different configuration than the people on Baker Street do. And they will, and they will probably not have the same physical protections. You know, you may not, you may not see, if you're a Baker Street resident, you may not see the structure or the development, you know, of removal of trees in the same fashion that the Benwood neighbors would be. So I think that that has to be part of the discussion, you know. And, and, and the consideration as a board about whether the waivers, you know, work and what's the public good? I, you know, kind of in, in, in consideration of what Paige was saying.
Oh, I, I, I agree. In particular, the, it looks like the, you know, the Kilcoin residents, they have a fairly deep backyard, but they're going to be abutting this property. So, you know, some.
Them, and I think Mr. Foster as well. You know, I don't know all of them, but I do know that that's what, that's the area that's that, 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 I think that they, I don't know how you guys give them consideration, but I think you just need to look at that. I know a good bit of the chatter has come from the historic district. And some, and clearly some from Mr. Foster, some of the other neighbors as well. But I just, you know, I, I, I think that that's something that you guys need to seriously take into consideration is how, how you deal with their concerns.
I agree.
I don't know if anyone else has any point of view about this at this moment, or, you know, wants to add anything.
John Rhodes have anything? We haven't had the benefit of his input on this project. Does he know how to unmute himself?
John, do you want to add something?
Diana's helping him. Hold on a sec. He's, this is his first time on Zoom.
Good work, Diana.
She's going in.
Where are you? Oh, no, no, no. You've disappeared.
I didn't realize you guys were that close.
You got him, Diana.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now, now we can begin some discussions. Bill, you're the guy who drew the plan, so, and I've been looking at it from time to time. At one point in time, you would submitted a below standard cul-de-sac, a below standard cul-de-sac. And then you've since gone to work and produced a plan that dated December 3, 2020, that shows an at-size cul-de-sac, which you don't want to build, but you're just trying to prove that you can build a cul-de-sac to, to the town's planning board standards, and then ask for the waiver. That's always been a standard. That once you show us you can build it to standards, then we'll talk waivers. So you've now demonstrated that you can build a cul-de-sac on the lot and still build the duplex in a different location, but you can do that. Now, in most instances, when we build a cul-de-sac, we build it on a road stub that was left by previous planning board action or on a road stub that's filed under subdivision control law. In this case, we're plucking a, we can plunk a cul-de-sac that will meet the planning board standards on a 20-foot right-of-way. Whereas in most cases, and I'm questioning the legality under the subdivision control law of doing this, in this case, you're plucking or attaching to a 20-foot right-of-way. All the cases that I've seen where we've dealt with cul-de-sacs, and you prove to us you can fit the standard, but would like to build something smaller, is attached to a roadway that had previous or is currently being applied for approval under subdivision control law. So that case, that gives me a little bit of hot burn as to the actual legal right to put a cul-de-sac onto the end of a right-of-way. Because right now, it has no frontage on any street at all. You're creating the frontage by putting a cul-de-sac and attaching it to a right-of-way which has never had planning board action and doesn't come close to the 50-foot road width. So it's a lot to try to digest in. But I think that the legality of attaching a cul-de-sac to a landlocked parcel by meeting the subdivision standards, but building something smaller. But we've never addressed that stretch again, and you went from Main Street along Orchard Place relative to the appropriateness of being able to host a subdivision. Now, I know Jeff has done the, the title research, and it's pretty clear that this lot has rights of access through Orchard Lane, and, and that appears to be true. However, in respect to the subdivision control law, can you put the cul-de-sac on a road on a right-of-way which has never been involved with any part of definitive subdivision planning? That's one of the issues. If that issue passes and it's allowable, then, then the board has to think about the waivers that we'd be willing to grant. And of course, waivers require some public benefit. But I think, I think it's the legality of, of building a cul-de-sac on to connect to a road that has frontage that was never been acted on by the planning board. I can't say I've run into this case, Bill. I've always put cul-de-sacs as part of one project, and I've attached cul-de-sacs on to road stubs that have been left by planning board action 20 or 30 years ago, and now don't comply, but that's an easy waiver.
So we, we, this is Jeff, John.
Yes.
We can look into that. I'm not aware of any issue. It's, it is a roadway that does and will provide sufficient width and grade.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't, Jeff, I agree with you. I think two, two more families coming in and out of the road, that doesn't raise high concerns. But the concern is the legality of, of designing the cul-de-sac without having ever connect to a passage out to an approved street, a town-owned street, that has never been part of a previous planning board action, definitive subdivision action. Because that right-of-way has probably been here before subdivision control law. Which goes back to like 48 to 52, that era.
So John, to answer your question, I think you were addressing it to me because you were kind of trying to jog my memory, which
Yes.
on maybe some past actions that
That you brought into, Bill.
Yeah. So the only one I could think of off the top of my head, and I, I agree with Jeff, just, you know, we're going to have to look into this more. The one that thinks I could think of off the top of my head is Camp Road. And, and I'm talking about the piece of Camp Road that comes in off of North Street, which is a private way, which was paved and then dirt, probably for the last half of it, once you get past that Whispering Pines Road, McKenzie, McCaslin, one of those. We've done, we did a, we did, we, meaning me as the engineer and the board, did a subdivision off of that road. A little cul-de-sac, and I, I can't remember how many lots it was, two, something like that. So I think that fits your, kind of fits your question.
Yeah, but certainly in the same neighborhood, Bill.
Not the same, not the same scenario, because it's off the end, but it definitely was. That was a dirt road. It was a dirt road, unaccepted, private way that had never been acted on by Planning Board. But the Planning Board looked at and said, okay, the access is adequate. You have deeded access, and we're going to allow this. But I need to go back and look at that again. So that's just off the top of my head. So hold me to that. And like Jeff said, let us look at it a little bit more in order to maybe address that particular issue.
So Bill, let me just, let me just not interrupt you, but, but ask you a question about. So Bill, let me just, let me just not interrupt you, but, but ask you a question about that. If I recall, part of, part of that, that, that particular situation was landowners who had, who had title to those lots for many years, but didn't, couldn't gain access. That were in their families or whatever. And I, and that may have had some influence in the idea that, 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 that they could finally build a home on, on that land that they, that for many, many years, decades even, they couldn't gain access to. So I may be wrong about that, but that seems to be in the back of my mind.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, Kevin. You're, you're probably right. We have to go back and pull that out. So we need to do some research.
Okay.
But that, 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 that situation with the legality under the subdivision control law of connecting a cul-de-sac to a right-of-way which has never been through the subdivision process gives me heartburn. And in, in all honesty, the whole project gives me some heartburn. But I do agree with Jeff, this is what we're left with. All, all the easy projects, your dad subdivided, Bill.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm not a huge advocate of the project just as an overview. But however, we have to follow the subdivision control laws. That's our rulebook in this case. And so if, if you follow the subdivision control laws, then, then you're there. If you didn't have to ask for any waivers, but once you ask for waivers, then we have to evaluate the waivers. And I may be missing a few points, but those are my thoughts.
So Kevin, do you, um, do you want to do, like, are you, do you want to take it under advisement and get more info on what the subdivision control? Or do you want to, is there, does the board have enough information to give a general indication? What's?
Well, John brings up some new points. I mean, you know, we could certainly wait and get more information about that, but I don't disagree with him. I think this is, this, this is a very difficult. This is not, this is very untypical. In, in, in the past, where we've had these informal discussions and had these opportunities to look at a situation where somebody says, well, I'm entering off an existing way, the way John said, and I could build this bubble. I can prove it to you. I can build it. And, but then if I did build it, I'd have to do more pavement than was necessary. I'd have to, I would, I'd be leaving it to the town to maintain. I'd be, you know, I'd be creating new requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And we could, I, I could do the, do it in this other fashion. And like you've said in the past, Paige, the board would have an opportunity to say, well, if you wanted that bad building, and see if the developer has the taste to invest the type of energy and capital to, to make it happen, or, you know, or not. And, or we could, as a board, do what we have done on occasion and say, yeah, we hear your argument. It's a logical argument, and it, and it does relieve the town of some expense in the future and, and the need to maintain things for new residents that are there, and it's only one or two homes or whatever it might be. They've generally been very small, you know, like a one or two home subdivisions, similar to the one thing, thing that Bill had just mentioned a minute ago. And again, in that sense, this is not that different. But to John's point, you know, we're going over an existing right-of-way. We're not looking to really, we're not looking to really improve that way other than some new pavement. Not, not, not widening it to a more traditional point of view as the request, no sidewalk, no street trees, no lighting. And again, it comes back to the question of the public good. I mean, oftentimes, there, there is one, and I'm, in this case, not to be critical of, of Joe's desire to provide additional housing. That's, that's an open question for me, and I don't know how the other board members feel about, you know, is there, is there a public benefit other than the fact that the potential is there for two new living domiciles could be created within that backlot? And, 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 and is that enough of an argument to A, grant the waivers, and B, decline to require the building of the full cul-de-sac into the lot one, which is in the historic district, and then see where that falls, you know, from a legal perspective, both with, you know, Mr. Lovely's point of view, town council's point of view, and whoever's going to represent the historic district commission if that, if that becomes an involvement. So it's, 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 it's complicated for such a small, simple thing. It's, it's not so simple.
But I think we'd like to address those concerns and, and maybe come back if, if that works for you. You know, I, I think we need probably some, some examples of this type of approach. I, I don't see anything in the subdivision control bylaw that prohibits this, but then again, I haven't really looked at it from that perspective.
Well, I don't think it's a question of prohibition. I think it's a question of, of whether the board feels comfortable in granting the waivers in exchange for allowing the lesser roadway and the construction of the structure that needs to be built. And trying to take, and trying to politely take into consideration the concerns of neighbor that we want in any and I don't think that, I don't think that these guys have any, you know, super rights. I think that if, if, if neighbors in general would come up with this thing, we would certainly have a conversation. I know that, I, I, I know that in a lot of these cases, the point of view of the board and myself in particular has been, well, you know, you had the quiet enjoyment of someone else's property for many years, and so therefore that doesn't give you special rights. You know, the, you know, under the, under the Fifth Amendment, you know, the developer has the right to develop their land. And, you know, there, there are rights to go with both sides. But I just, I think we need to do our best, because this is such a, an unusual situation. It's not, it's not typical as, as many some of the other ones may have been. So, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem, and if, if you guys want to do some more research. I, I think John would like to hear some of those answers as well. He could speak for himself. I don't know how Tracy and Ron and Jeff feel, but I would, I'd welcome their point of view. If they're still here with us.
Yeah, Kevin, it's Jeff.
Yeah, please.
Can you, yeah, I would just say, I mean, I, I concur with John certainly about one thing. I mean, to me, what, at least from what I'm hearing, and I have to say, John, you really articulated, well, just something that was in the back of my head. I couldn't quite figure out what it is, but to me, I, I would think that the fundamental issue here is, as John articulated, you know, is it even a doable or a legal thing to repurpose for all intents and purposes what has been a right-of-way, really a common driveway per se, for this type of purpose? And, you know, Jeff Lovely had, had, obviously through a sequence of ownership changes, pretty much documented that that right-of-way continues to exist even now. But if that issue was settled, I would say in terms of the applicant's favor, then you get to the point of the waiver consideration. And the one thing that I would find it hard to do is to play a game of chicken on full buildout, as it were, because to me, that would be akin to putting those abutters and/or close property owners who already view themselves as at some sort of risk from this is really raising the stakes and putting them potentially even more at risk. So I think that's something we have to weigh. Just my two cents.
Thank you.
Kevin? This is Joe Lynch. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I just want, I did want to point out that I have made contact with a number of the abutters over on Bentwood. We definitely had, you know, frank conversations. Most were not thrilled with the idea of having a house behind their house. A lot of it was privacy issues that I said, I think we can work on privacy issues with either landscaping or some fencing and that type of thing. I also had a conversation and then a meeting with Ellen Sampson, who owns the Eight Orchard. She's the one that has the shed and the two parking spaces. And I also said to her that I thought we could work something out if, if the project's moving forward to, you know, relocate her spaces and shed to some agreeable location, and, and we can put that together, and I can meet with her again. Just for background information that I, you know, started some of the, 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 the reaching out to the abutters. And definitely got some feedback, and I've been conveying that with Bill and, and Jeff, so we have had some conversation, conversation with the people.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Ron and Tracy, could we hear from you?
I'd like to see some more information come forward. I'm not going to completely rule out the project at this point in time, but I would like to see some more input.
I would, I would, I would agree with Ron. I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally ruling it out, but the amount of waivers that are being asked for is of concern to me. And in terms of the amount of waivers itself and what precedent it would set for, you know, future small, you know, not small, but pieces of land like this that we have to fit stuff in. And while I appreciate the adding two homes to, and Paige and I debate this all the time, to, you know, to the availability, the inventory in town. You know, one thing we're dealing with on the housing front is people want affordable, not affordable housing, but housing that's not $500,000. You know, a lot of families under Simba can't afford that. And I think that's probably what would end up being here. So, you know, providing housing, it's great if you provide housing, but if you do it at a price point that, you know, the market, although right now could bear, that's just of concern to me as well.
Okay, so I think I hear everybody pretty much saying that they're willing to allow you to come forward with some further information for us to consider. And see if we can, if we can satisfy John's concerns and our concerns and see, you know, where it goes from there.
And I think Mr. Lynch speaking to the abutters as he has and sounds like he's going to continue to do is a good additional next step as well.
Yes.
Makes our life easier if everyone comes together and comes to the resolution on the road.
But again, to the point, sometimes that does work, but in this instance, you know, if it can't be done, it can't be done.
Yep.
Well, you know, even, I don't know that we're going to get all those abutters to agree, and I understand what they're saying, but first, I think, you know, to John's point, we have to sort of find out the facts. And you guys can make an informed decision to whether we get to whether the abutters items are considered.
Good point, Paige. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to do it in two weeks, a month. What, you want to just let us know when you're going to be back? Obviously, we have to do it on Zoom, so we have a lot of people we have to let know that.
Two weeks would be good, if you can do it. What was that, Kevin?
I said, I said two weeks to 28th would be good if you can do it.
Yeah. I can do it, Joe.
Yeah, 28th is fine.
Billy?
Okay. We still have to do zoning amendments. That's why I'm rushing us a little. We have more homework to do.
I saw that on your agenda. I was, I was surprised.
Well, town meeting warrant closes tomorrow, so.
Oh, okay. You don't have a choice.
Yeah, we have a mess for a month, and this popped up, so we're a little bit under the gun.
Okay. Well, the good news is you don't have to stay.
That's true.
Take care, guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For coming.
Have a good evening to all.
Thanks.
To anybody watching, to be continued again.
It being sometime after 8:00 P.M., we have a town meeting warrant articles to, to deal with.
Yes.
Leading.
Yes, sir. So I prepared a little bit, a little memo on this. I'll try to go through this quickly. We have three items that we put placeholders in for. The first is, ironically, it's the Baker Street Historic District map. This has been something on our to-do list long before Orchard Place came up. We just happened to notice that the reference in section 145 does not match the map. So we are working with Ryan and G.I.S. to prepare a new map. We've sent that over to the Historic District Commission so they could, you know, check it. I will say that if this segue, for, for our purposes, we were just looking to clean up an inaccurate reference. If the Historic District Commission ends up wanting to make changes, then I would probably recommend that they take over sort of as running this. Right now, I'm glad to do it as a, as a housekeeping item. If it gets into substance, where we're talking about the, you know, changing the district boundaries, I think that would be better suited for them, but I would suggest that the planning boards support us at least cleaning up to make sure we have the right map referenced in the zoning bylaw. Secondly, is actually very confusing and confounding, and one that might not make it to town meeting floor. Gabby caught this a little bit ago as well, that if you look on my memo under 2019, it shows assisted living as a PB, which means special permit in all districts, except it was a no in S1. Inexplicably, if you look at the bylaw now, it changed the language. It added or convalescent hall or home. Delete that assisted living. That's a mistake. But it says assisted living facility, nursing home, or convalescent home, and then it has all Ys with two PBs. We do not know where that came from. That's why I say it might not even go to town meeting. It might have been just a pure typo that we're going to work with Bob Cutler to get cleaned up, and if that's the case, we could just fix it. But if for some inexplicable reason we have to vote it, I would suggest we get that on there, because I don't think very many people want a nursing home next to their property in the R40. And then lastly, floodplain bylaw. This is going to be the death of me, I can tell you right now, because the state has submitted a model bylaw. I will, I will give them credit. I sent it off to the woman who's overseeing the program, and she actually edited, like, made the changes for me. I've submitted a bit of a copy. I've submitted a copy with comments to here. There's still a bunch of questions in here, but I, this is just a placeholder. Bottom line is, we have no choice on this. In order to remain, for Foxborough property owners to remain eligible for flood insurance, we need to meet this requirement. So we've been told by the state that this has to be done at our next available town meeting, so we will be doing it. So stay tuned. I'm working with everybody to figure out who the floodplain administrator is. It's a hot potato game right now. Town engineer doesn't want to do it, so we're back to for building commissioner. So, so those are our three articles. I think they're all, we, we could have thrown more on there, but given the uncertainties with COVID and meetings and just, we just don't know how many articles we're going to have, given that we missed a meeting for the most part last year. I anticipate more articles in November. We've told that we could have a, you know, possibly have a full town meeting in November. But for now, I would propose these three articles. Comments, questions, or a vote to say yes.
Vote to say yes.
I second John's motion.
All those in favor? One at a time, because it's a roll call.
Oh, yeah, roll call.
Tracy says aye.
John Rhodes, aye.
Kevin White.
Jeff, aye.
Yep.
Jeff and Ron, aye. Okay. That's all I've got, folks.
Aye, aye, aye.
I know, it was a night.
That's it. That's it. Do you want to keep going? You can always go and grab some alcoholic beverages. We'll shut off Foxborough. Virtual cocktail party.
Virtual. Very well, very well.
Hey, John, you did very well tonight, considering it's your, you know, your, your breakthrough meeting.
Well, you know, I had to get back into the swing of things. This issue with that little subdivision off of Orchard Place, it's just a
Can, can we adjourn the meeting, please?
Yeah, it's got lots of warts on it.
Yeah, we're on, we're on TV, so why don't we adjourn this?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Tracy says aye.
Ron says aye.
John Rhodes, Jeff says aye.
Jeff says aye.
I say aye, and I don't even get a vote.
Yes, you do.
All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Here, everybody.
Let's all give Mike Weber a round of applause.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Good night, everyone.